I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Here.
Jovanini?
Aye.
Echo? Callas?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Bradshaw? Here. Myers? Gabor?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
The intended is to have this civic center fully meeting, having no business, we will adjourn that meeting right away and move on to consent agenda. Second by Phil Callas, second by Eric Myers. We approve the consent agenda. Roll call please.
Mark?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Aye.
Callas?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers? Gabor?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
On the regular agenda, you can't go up so late. It'll be late for you. Give us the latest.
Just wanted to update the council on a very long working day at the service. Things are going pretty smoothly now. We've got a lot of things to work out. Among the blocks, there are a hundred calls. An increase of seventeen calls in comparison to the year before. Eighty-two percent of those call over, and that's really good. Strictly running high in our city limits as well as the district's calls. I think they call at least twenty-five times. It's an increase in calls amongst September. Right now, we're running two emails of those in the next few weeks before they have thirty more here. We'll work through the process and give them that essence. We also asked people to note the applications for the parrotting and EMT for our positions. We do that on Thursday. So far, we're receiving two, ten, and twelve applicants. We'll continue to collect those and then we'll start to sort through those to start the EMT interviews. So if everything's going very smoothly, we continue to provide the service at a very high standard to our community. We were also able to help out the crushes price this week as well as stay by our crushes weekend as well as also tackle, we actually stayed by the PTHS football games. So we're becoming more diversified than just providing one-on-one calls. We've got additional resource with individuals and our full-time staff on to help to continue to grow. Better partner, not like my end of the month, but inside town. So are there any questions that was going inside from the council?
Thanks, Jake. I think it all feels like today, a project that's been all around. Thank you. Uh, moving on, what's the sewer update? They've been, they've scared of what?
Not too bad.
You could two man it. So if you recall, I think it was in February or maybe March, we brought this to the council to extend sewer. What you see on the map there is the existing sewers and along 116 there behind, by the golf course behind the number two green, there's a manhole there. We would, we're gonna take, uh, at that location and head north along those homes on the backside of Westview Drive. There's twelve there that don't have sewer that we'll be able to serve. We also have a couple, uh, homes up on 116 and then a business that is the, I think, or the office there. And we run out of manhole to the west to serve those. And then if there's a manhole kind of in the middle on the bottom of the sheet, we would take that and head west. We'd be able to serve two more businesses and the church out there. And some of those are in the city already. The church, I think the three businesses are in. The one hole on 116 is in and then none of it on, uh, Westview. So this would allow us to serve them with sanitary sewer. We have had some back there, I think, one hole in the means of septic, which they can't get. It's close enough to the sewers. That's kind of what spurred this. So right now, I've got, uh, some signatures from Jake and I've got one or two more to get. We'll send the permit back to the local EMTA. Hopefully that will be turned around in a couple of months. In the interim, we can go out to bid for that and then we would like to construct in November. So that's kind of our current status right now. Any questions?
Well, if we move on forward with this project, we're gonna be getting into the field, talking to the homeowners about, uh, if they want to connect while we're in the process of writing that plan. And, um, I think we've kind of alluded to, which I thought we might want to just put on the record, to answer the questions upfront, is it our intention to annex that that area is completely surrounded? And that if so, what? And, uh, my recommendation, if we are going to move forward with the project, you know, build the always say again, provide the services, provide the service. And when we delay the annexation until after the first of the year, you delay the property city, the tax rules until the following year.
Any questions? So what, how far are we going this November, you said, right? Right, our plan will be in November and a couple of things we'll probably have to take into account. The permit on 116, which we have submitted to the state for that permit. My belief is that we would go along Westview Drive and by December that that would be installed. I think possibly the west portion would also be installed. It'll depend on the winter weather and how severe it is or how early it gets severe. But I think by spring, we would be complete with all. It is probably a forty working day, thirty to forty working day project, I would say.
If you want to get out of that fairway, it's, uh, where it's possible to sit around and try to get to the ground center grass bags.
We don't give you the annexation certificates.
The thing that we need to have an answer for, this is Jake's still knocking on doors. A, do I have to hook up? The answer's no. That, uh, what we've done in the past is, um, that it's gonna be available and that they certainly can. You know, that there's the $5,000 tap-on fee. There's no discount to, uh, hook on and fill it.
We've done a discount in the past.
That was as a motivation to get people in.
And now we have a track and so we, they don't have to. Gotcha.
So, uh, but I think that, um, if it's gonna be our position that, you know, come the first of the year, that area that is surrounded is gonna be annexed, that may change people's opinion of whether or not we're gonna go ahead and, you know, tell them or not. So the more information Jake has in going knocking on doors, the better it's gonna be.
My thought is we annex after the first year, but tell them that upfront.
Is that a consensus?
I certainly think that's a good way for us to go. One, there, no doubt, sorry. One should have brought it into the city. They don't have an option to put in, replace their septic.
Well, right now, they don't have an option to replace because we have sewer lines within
Three hundred.
Three hundred feet. And so in fact, there's one house out there that the septic system is shot and they haven't been able to get it to get because they're close enough to the sewer.
That's a problem.
Yeah, so there, no, there'll be, you know, once, uh, septic goes down, it will not be replaced.
If you're thinking about bikes or a property, so give it to you.
We've already recorded this app on the field. For some people that are buying properties or, you know, it's gonna be a problem.
Any other questions? So here's none? You wanna add anything?
Sure.
Okay.
These are nice balloons.
Look at that.
No, I don't want them up there.
Look at that.
That's a lot of gold.
Oh, younger than one, younger than a fish.
Wildly athletic or what?
I just took them to the.
Wow, this is one of the topics of, uh, see, it's definitely fine, but it's combined, right? And, uh, you know, so reflecting on this, uh, one of the most difficult things is hiring or following in the footsteps of a, um, of a legend. Uh, you know, coaches, where they follow all the fan coaches, the level of expectations, you know, they usually just can't meet, it's, it's not, uh, we're about to make. Stop and think about this. Sixteen years ago, Ellie was replacing Betty Estes.
That was okay.
That, that's, that's, uh, really replacing a legend. And, uh, some of you are still here and I suspect that you, the thoughts were going through their head. Is she gonna be able to pull this off and keep this thing going? Well, if, if we would have said sixteen years ago, this is what it's gonna look like sixteen years from now, even Betty as optimistic as she was would say, there's no way, you know? And, uh, that's because Ellie took the ball and ran with it and, um, just done a tremendous job. Four things, you know, there's a whole bunch to talk about, I'm just gonna get on to four things. Number one is how much our product has expanded over this, since sixteen years. Um, and, and her fingerprints are all over this. Uh, the Lincoln statue in '06, even by 8005, we just opened the Rock 66 Museum and the War Museum just opened. And then in '06, we did the Lincoln statue, '07, the mural, looking for latest exhibits in '08. '09, the wall dogs and the murals on Main Street. And you just see project after project after project expanding our footprint, expanding our product. Um, and then when we hit 2017, things just went crazy. And particularly, uh, the Hampton Inn opening in 17, uh, the Precision 20 opening in 19, New Orleans opening in 20. And, you know, those three projects bring hundreds of thousands of dollars in local taxes. And those are directly tied to these other projects over, uh, the sixteen-year period. That, uh, when those guys came and were looking at the community, they saw international visitors and, I mean, they were just blown away. They talked about the energy that's in the community and this thing, when we were hitting 2019, 2020, it was hitting on all cylinders. And then 2020, you know, things are coming back. And so, so as we look at the past sixteen years, the expansion of this, the paniac product, uh, she's over. Second thing, our relationships. You know, Betty, I'm, I'm trying so hard to make this not sound like a eulogy. Okay, let's look at our picture back there. We don't want to see it. From state officials, tourism office, you know, they would call on her to go to, um, trade shows and represent the state, uh, work with them, press, work with them. Uh, she built a network of relationships, relationships at the state level. Tour operators went to numerous, uh, trade shows with tour operators, uh, developed that, uh, that linkage, uh, that really paid dividends. The local, uh, organizations, car clubs, other communities. And besides that, she was a resource for other communities. And so all of those relationships that she developed, many of them helped build that product. And so, uh, relationships is, is number two. Number three is the whole aspect of hospitality. You know, Betty Estes carried around a red carpet in the back of her car in the trunk. And whenever a visitor was there, she would roll up that red carpet so that they could, um, walk on it. Well, Ellie doesn't have a red carpet in her car. Uh, but that concept of hospitality has run through the tourism office, all of the, uh, various aspects of tourism. Um, car clubs and tour operators, you know, when, when they schedule something, their reputation is on the line. They want to make sure that it goes well. And they'll call Ellie and they'll say, uh, we want to come and we want to visit and we want to spend one night, two nights, sometimes three nights. And they want to make sure that the people who are paying or that they're planning for really have a good time. So Ellie will sit down, okay, what are you looking for? What's the demographics of the group? Help them, uh, develop their itinerary. And then they just sit back and watch it happen. And, you know, every time tour operators here, they'll, will get a letter, they'll get an email, they'll get a phone call about how the cooperation of the local office, they don't see anything like it. That they don't have to worry about anything, that everything is executed to perfection. And, you know, that means weekends and Saturday nights and Sunday nights and fried chicken and minorities. It's, uh, uh, but it's always, it's always with, with hospitality. Uh, you know, we've had business leaders, government leaders, literally from all over the world. Uh, and she's very comfortable with making them feel at home. And it's just amazing. And then lastly, individuals. Um, I got a call last, just a few weeks ago, uh, from a lady. She started off the conversation, says, I'm calling above Ellie Alexander. I just want you to know that she's an angel, said by God. And I said, I thought to myself, you know, I know I need a good height, but I didn't realize it was that. And she said, it was during the, the time when the cell phones were dead. Uh, and they were in town, they didn't know what to do. All their information was in the phone, they couldn't access it. She went out and said, can I help you? And they were very frustrated and they didn't know what hotel they were staying at. So she took them or led them out there, made sure she got them checked in, helped them figure out what they were gonna do for dinner and they just thought that they needed to enjoy it. Uh, so, um, you know.
They told you that they took my parking spot?
So, um, yeah. And lastly, the thing that just backs out again, if you go on another time, she's a great person. And, uh, I'll hold it. Um, she's, she's a tremendous friend. Uh, she loves her family. And the family is very easy to love. Uh, she loves her job. And, you know, the really good thing is she told us, we're gonna still be seeing her. Let me just tell us, we were doing some playing, there's some upcoming events and she says, oh, I'll come and help with that. And then, no, but I'll come and help with that. So, uh, you're down to the book and so, uh, so, um... Ellie?
Thanks.
This is my first. I really need to just thank all of you because you've really been, I was part of a team of people that have done this and most of you have been on that team with me most of the time. So I really thank you for giving me the opportunity to do the things that I was able to do. And, um, but you have been just amazing, both personally, professionally. I just really thank you for all you've done, the help and that's about all, you say? Thank you.
I'm not impressed with it.
You were right.
Yeah. So, yeah, replace, uh, if you have thought about that, it's really difficult following a legend. All the famous coaches have, you know. And you know what? Thirty years from now, someone's gonna be standing up here saying, it's really difficult to replace a legend. Thirty years, that's what you said.
Oh, my God.
Um, you know, when Ellie announced her retirement, I sat down with Liz and I said, you're ready for this? And we were in the conference room and she says, yeah. I says, tell me what you think. She immediately went up to me.
Why?
All right, you know, that's...
Well, she was just trying to get on your good side.
She drawled a lot right at night. Uh, but, um, I, I was really impressed as she laid out wherever at, where we need to go and how we need, what we need to do. Um, that, you know, during this, to 2020, uh, we've really reevaluated everything. Uh, and in a few weeks, she's gonna be rolling out new organization. You know, this whole thing that this team has been doing has gone far beyond tourism, that second economic development, community development, it's really making this, uh, a better place to fall. And so, um, I'm excited. It's been great to see, um, Liz grow into this role. And as saying bye is one of those tough ones, saying Liz, ready for it, uh, is, is one of those exciting things. And so, uh, the way this thing works is you need to confirm my point of, um, Liz to the tourism director position. It's gonna be, uh, doing this, so. And I'm excited for you to hear, uh, what this is gonna look like.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Yes. Motion by Mike R., second by Charlie. Roll call please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Callas?
Well, okay.
I don't have a column.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Maybe.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gabor?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Mark?
Thank you. Liz, besides the Navy, is there anything else for the forward that we know you're gonna do a great job? Ellie, we have an open door policy for you. And you can apply this on the day. Wonder if you're not, as you know, uh, there was a fellow that was sitting here a while back and he took credit for a lot of the things that went on right here. And we know it didn't work, all right? So we really appreciated everything that you've done and through this sixteen years and beyond, we look forward to working with you all that time. And if Liz gets in real trouble, she knows where to call.
I, I have told her, if you need any time, call.
Thank you very much. And you enjoyed your time. Some way here. Now I'll be sorry. Moving on. Mayor's comments. My big comments would be on the treasures, the union of precious prey. I'd like to name all the volunteers who spent hours putting the prey together, if I can. But they did a great job, they went off real well. A hundred and forty-five entrants plus twenty-some more that showed up afterwards. I think, uh, crowd was great. Not the largest crowd ever, but a great crowd, straight down. The crowds of the reunion have been very, very good. I think folks out there just, they're waiting for it. Other than that, uh...
Bill? I want to comment, you're living on the prey route. It gives me a mess. I couldn't believe we got, we got up next morning and it's gone. I would have played the, uh, the prey route, but they did a good job.
They were giving a good job. You enjoyed it?
See, they did a good job.
Moving on. Yeah, and, yeah, I think they did a good job and started many, it was great at the time. And I'll tell you, it's the first time I go in the parade and, you know, I have shields up. No one's made us a drum. They have something to be thanked for. Even when I went past Hicks's house, I was shielded. City council members. Add on, anything?
I'm disappointed that David didn't know.
Sorry for me.
City administrator. We have refreshments afterwards, so, uh, so I forgot to say goodbye or hello. Public guidance.
Group, fire away.
Yeah, I was out by the solar farm and...
I'm sorry, can I add a name?
Yeah, you can add a name.
John O'Leary.
Yep.
I've sold farm chemicals for twenty-six years. That's a disaster out there. You got water, hay, and land that's ordered five, six feet tall. Anybody that's got farming relatives, each water, hay plant has a hundred thousand seeds on it. So you guys got a mess out there. I think whoever's supposed to maintain it ought to be in there at least once a month mowing the damn things off. It's just awful. The second thing I question I got, I live in 613 East Washington Street. The lady that owns the house next to me lives in Georgia. Her son lives in the house. He's renting rooms out, there's four other unrelated people live there plus a girl. And I want to know what the zoning is for a house that switched to a boarding house after being a single-family residence. So I guess that's still...
It's a single-family residence, still.
Still?
Yeah, but I can't regulate who, he put my house, stay, stay over in the house.
You can't like?
I can't regulate who lives in the house with it.
So...
He decides to rent rooms out.
There's nothing, okay, then what about the taxes? If it's a single-family residence and she's renting rooms out, doesn't that change?
Well, we don't deserve to rent rooms out.
Oh, yeah, I ask the kids, are they paying by the month? So doesn't that change the tax rate for that seller?
We'll get it, John. We'll, we'll take a look at that because I wasn't aware of that. I wasn't aware of the airport line, built by a week ago, we're working on that one too.
All right, thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Though they, they signed the airport, they sent the solar panels and the developers supposed to control these.
So...
Ten acres and...
So...
Ten acres of solar farm to go and we should go and help down the hill. I believe so.
Yeah. The developers.
Yeah.
I'll tell them.
Yeah, obviously I have a name. I have an address and a phone number, right?
No, we've got, we've got company. Somebody else called in attention while we do. Somebody else throw them an attention while we do it.
As, uh, Monta Hooded do, uh, there is refreshments to the cake, and I see you're in back there. You can add it, come down here to the Tuesday meeting, which he said, looks like he made it again. Why don't we adjourn the meeting with a motion from John Ogleman, seconded by Ryan. Roll call please.
Just like I was.
Yep.